Call the meeting to order. We do have a quorum. I'd take a motion to approve the agenda and the minutes. Their second? Motion's second, all favor eye? Eye, pose. Kerry, Lauren Rich.
Right away. North, the north curve there is a little different because there are kind of roads coming off of that one. So that right away is a little different. So I don't, we haven't looked too much into that right now. Maybe over the course. And then we'll talk to, we'll talk to the county attorney about it to be able to give us some better guidance on how to handle that. We did have, I did have the LTAP guy come down or came up from Ames on Friday morning, look at three ninety for the thrust a little bit. He'll, he's gonna write down his observations and send them to me. A lot of it, he's, he's driven a lot of intersections in the state of Iowa. Um, he's got his own opinions on it. Not much that he sees, if anything, that he's confused by the situation out there is the, the dangers that are there because he's confused by what's the danger. So. But don't give me his, 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 uh, his, uh, view on it. And then if we want to proceed further with bringing Iowa State Patrol and another DOT people look at it, we can certainly. Got around, uh, blade roads today while it's nice out. Straightened up some of my chat and whatever. You got, uh, cat truck, cat dump trucks still clearly with the terrible problems, I think. Dump trucks, I think, brought back from, we got one cat, we're still doing it in chassis, or one motor greater, we're still doing it in chassis a little bit, and then one with a fuel pump problem. The way the, the way the weather is right now, we should be in good shape for anything possible. We're getting, uh, probably, we'll get another seven, eight hundred tons of salt in just to fulfill our obligation with the salt company.
Saw that there were no, this morning when I came up.
Be another eight loads on Friday, another sixteen today. So we'll keep filling as much as we can, minimal obligation they prepare, we'll see how full we are, but. Uh, I think it's probably out of warranty by now, but we don't really know what it is for sure.
Um, on that intersection, I guess I would like to see State Patrol get involved, get their opinion on it too. I don't, uh, yeah, this, this guy from whatever else I, I mean, I'm sure his opinion.
He's their safety supervisor, right? He's, he's an engineer.
But I just like to get State Patrol's opinion too, I guess.
If that's what you guys want, we'll bring everybody here.
Yeah.
It'll probably be in April. I mean.
That's, and that's fine, just.
Do you want everybody to look at it?
But based on, based on the observations and he drove the intersections and, and he's looking at site distances and all, all the things we have of now, you know, the observations that he came up with are similar to what mine are. People are choosing not to pay attention then, then actually just.
Right.
But yeah, that's everybody, that's everybody's opinion and, and, uh.
Yep. Like say, yeah, if you could, uh, get those guys involved.
We'll get this thing back and then I'll just let him know that, hey, look, the board really wants to look a little deeper into everybody's and put it in that.
Okay, that'd be great. Thank you.
That's all I've got for you this morning.
Do you want to just jump ahead of AJ's safety?
Yeah.
He was looking into more stuff, more.
Yep, that's fine. Let me jump up to safety.
Yeah, the, the, the question, the question on, uh, you know, we, we do a lot of stuff with NIACOG. Actually, NIACOG hires out for that procedure that they do.
Okay.
So Jim Moody is the guy that does the stuff for NIACOG. And he's got his own company. It's called Safety Solutions.
Okay.
Um, and I had Russ call him. I was busy doing some other stuff, but he got some information that he, he, he works on an hourly basis, but he can basically, uh, do anything that we want him to do as far as what we're looking, I think he's got what we're looking for. And I don't know if there's other companies that do it too, but he can do safety training, he can do onsite audits. He can help us with our written safety programs, um, worker training, record keeping, um, OSHA ten hour certification. He can do those kinds of things, certify people, and he also can help with, uh, OSHA abatement issues and stuff like that. So it might be something that the safety committee wants to bring in a couple of people that have similar things and just let them know what we're looking for as a committee.
Right.
What we're looking for to hire, you know, to, to get somebody on board. So I think that's one option for us. He's the same guy, like I said, that NIACOG hires.
Okay, we could get him a little more regular maybe for.
Well, yeah, he's, yeah, it almost seems like he's an a la carte type.
That's good, because if, I mean, then we wouldn't have to get into a three-year contract or anything like that, but.
Yeah, and I don't know what he's got for, what, what, you know, what he's, you know, what his obligations are to sign up, but I think it's probably worth it to maybe invite him in or.
Yeah.
On one of our next meetings to just kind of discuss, give him an idea of what we're looking for.
Certainly get him up there next, next meeting and discuss or even before.
Right. Yeah, I'd say sooner the better. We need to stay on it so we can keep our insurance on.
Yeah.
Keep them happy, so.
Get it start working.
We're, yeah, work is way back down.
I think we're out of luck for this year.
Yeah.
But like, like we discussed in the past, if we can get, uh, you know, some policies, some better policies written, we can help hold people accountable more.
Correct.
Right, but it, and I know that Russ talked to him a little bit, but it's like, you've gotta get, i- if you are serious about safety, you cannot, you really have to hold your gun, stick your guns on. Um, once you got policies, you gotta stick to them and there is no, there, there should be very little leniency towards response, but I know it's going to be hard to break people in that way, but if you, if you, if you got to enforce it, you got to enforce it, otherwise you just don't go anywhere.
If you don't start.
Right.
And we're, we're in an insurance world. I mean, the more, the more proof that we, we provide our insurance companies stating we're doing this stuff, the better our rates are gonna be. And if we can, yeah, avoid injuries and avoid that kind of stuff, that's gonna make it even cheaper also, but at least it looks like we're trying to.
Well.
Maintain a standard, so, yeah.
And do, and do more accountability, I think.
And that's just the thing is, uh, somebody needs to come in and, and take care of every department. Like I said, even if it's walking through the offices up here and just checking their stuff, making sure they're not lifting anything that they shouldn't be, and they have trip hazards or anything like that, walking around the office as a cord.
There's a lot less here than it is out.
It is, but, but at least, at least if they come through this courthouse twice a year instead of quarterly, just to look things over and, and, uh, just document that we had a walkthrough, we had our.
All in check, you know, even having an audit like that maybe helps determine the future, uh, future needs of the courthouse.
Well, I think that's definitely something we'll do, whoever we bring on board, you know, I've got another guy too, he's a way more expensive, but I mean, we need to do a full, not just secondary road.
Yeah. But I mean, you see deficiencies in the, in the structures themselves and things, and I mean, that's just something else to, to evaluate the future needs.
Yep.
Joel's office will just be considered a storage closet that day.
They'll just light it on fire and burn it up.
Just take the afternoon off, get out of here.
We'll give you the garage space on any.
It's roomy. Yeah, it's bigger. I'll take that. No, that'd be great. See, see when he can, and when is next safety?
I don't remember where our next meeting is. I'll look it up and I'll see if he's available to come maybe.
Pretty sure we have one next. Every month or every other.
Every other one?
I think it's every month, but.
And if you guys saw that, April first, I think it was April four, yeah, it was the first, right? With Dean Shade, Shady?
Oh, then that's, okay.
That would be, uh, I'm gonna sign up and I'll be downstairs.
Oh, that's right. Yeah, I did punch that in there.
He's the work out guy, right?
Yeah. And he'll be our guy until they find the.
And then just as an FYI, we got the one oh five payment project being left next.
We can set up a, we can set up a safety committee meeting anytime in the next couple of weeks.
Works, you know, I think we'll get him time to spend, like, we can contact him and say, look, we're having another safety meeting. I think we've got a date. We'll just see if he's available to come in.
Check this out, check your schedules and have Mark set up an agenda and do some of the next couple, two, three weeks, it'll work out good for you guys.
You said that is getting let next week?
Tuesday.
Next Tuesday.
No, we won't have, I can give you guys updates on the cost, but there won't be a contract out for, I think, a few weeks for them to finalize stuff, so, right.
Alrighty, thank you, Rich. Uh, drainage. DB forty-six, lat nine, change order number one. Mark says, uh, April twelfth, it's the next safety committee meeting.
Yeah, if we could do one before that, Mark, probably good. If we can work it in, Rich, for you guys. It works for that guy too. See if we can work one in. Probably will be.
Change order was for nine thousand nine hundred and ninety-four dollars and ninety cents.
And DB forty-six.
DB forty-six, that would be over.
And that one's pretty much done.
And that buys about complete now.
Yeah, I'm seeing it right there, is there?
This is obvi- obviously accepted by Boltman Mega, so.
Motion to approve the change order for DB forty-six.
Okay, and most approved change orders are second, second. Alright, any other discussion? Very none, all favor eye? Eye, pose. Kerry. Yeah, I'm getting used to that.
Motion to approve the drainage claims. That's just a.
Sample. Right, you guys, you guys looked at that, right? There's a motion to approve drainage claims, they're second.
I'll second it.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all favor eye? Eye, pose. Motion Kerry. For today, change again next. Alright, uh, regular claims. I didn't see anything. Uh, wait a minute, I did, um. Does anybody know? Cause I don't even know. About that pump, but, uh, talk about the wastewater, so, yeah, no, the, that bill's in there too, twenty-four hundred to get that thawed out, but seven thousand to, uh.
To rebuild that pump.
Yeah. Right.
Quite a deal.
I had a new one, but I'm not sure what size they are, so I guess I can't speak, but you just have to get on Chris and make sure you send him emails out a little more often and that stuff, because.
Won't know about that one so much.
That's the problem.
Did you send us an email on the bill?
Well.
Yeah, she, she didn't, but she got it, but we should have gotten one stating. I mean, even it just, it's just the.
Hey, there's a big one coming or something.
Alright, it's just a notice that we did have a pump go down and it needs to be rebuilt and this is gonna be the approximate expense, a heads up is all I guess I'm asking, so. I'll email Chris and let him know, we'd appreciate that. Little notice on itself. Other than, is there any questions on the claims?
No.
Yeah, taking a motion to approve claims.
I'm like a motion to approve the claims.
Motion second, any other discussion? Hearing none, favor eye?
Eye.
Eye, pose.
Motion Kerry.
Any reports? They're all really. Alright. Uh, longevity for sheriff's office for Melissa and Margie. Salary changes?
Salary changes.
Yeah, motion to approve salary changes are second.
I'll second motion.
Right, any other discussion? Hearing none, all favor eye?
Eye.
Eye, pose. Motion Kerry. Okay, liquor license? Northwood Country Club. Yep. Motion to approve the, uh, Northwood Country Club liquor license.
I'll make a motion to approve the country club license.
Second. Okay, motion second, any other discussion? Hearing none, all favor eye?
Eye.
Eye, pose. Kerry, all three of them signed, it appears. Health insurance, fiscal year twenty-two rates. So we obviously had that discussion in our workshop. With changing the rate that we pay for employees.
Yeah.
Right, right now, we're at nine twenty-eight.
Yeah.
And we're gonna drop that down to eight forty.
Yeah.
Was the discussion, um, due to the fact that that's the.
Plan nine.
Plan nine, so the best plan will still be covered, and then if you take the lesser plan, then that adjustment will be made into the annuity. So. Uh, is there a motion to approve the health insurance rate to pay employees at eight?
Oh, make a motion.
Forty? Right, Jackie?
Mm-hmm.
Eight forty by Mark?
I'll second that motion.
Second by Ennis, any other discussion? Hearing none, um, all favor eye?
Eye.
Eye, pose. Alright, that motion will carry. Uh, whatever management plan. Jim Neil. Yeah.
Those are two sites and two grounds.
Oh, that's right.
Right across the.
Yep.
Yeah, he's just, just across the room, they. Just an update, showing where they. Buy that, yeah. Someone's here. And the Lincoln, line creek, someone's crossing the line. Right, motion to prove or acknowledge.
Motion knowledge of your management point for Jim Neil, right?
Yep, there's a motion to acknowledge a new management plan, is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
Alright, any other discussion? All favor eye?
Alright.
Eye, pose. Motion Kerry.
No, you don't need to sign.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, I need to sign.
Okay.
I gotta ship them back to them before. She wondered where they are.
Okay. Uh, safety committee, we already had that discussion. Um, discussion regarding resolution twenty eighteen dot twelve dot thirty-one regarding future TIF revenue dispersment. I have that, and I did not get it completed. Um, I'm still pre-writing a little bit of gray area on it, I guess, but I'll make sure it's correct and we'll present it to you guys when it is.
I have a question about it. I was reading through the original, or the resolution twenty eighteen twelve thirty-one. I went back and read through the Worth County ordinance eighteen twelve three. And in section four, it says, for the purposes of this ordinance prospectively committed, shall mean the passage through county resolution of a formula by which evaluation percentage of future renewable energy projects is designated in whole or in part for county infrastructure projects, as defined in section two. It says a valuation percentage. So then the resolution was written, which shows those valuation percentages against them four categories. So now if you're gonna repeal this resolution twenty eighteen twelve thirty-one, you're not doing what this ordinance says, so don't you have to repeal the ordinance too? And start over from scratch and rewrite the whole thing? It's just something that I picked up as I was reading through it.
Yeah, I guess.
Good, good question.
Right, and the way that appears is that they're combined, took together, so yeah.
In other words, this was written, and then they came in because this was written for a, a valuation percentage. Then they came in and ri- put the resolution in the place with the values, what, now we're getting rid of those percentages.
So you have to.
So that, you gotta change that ordinance though. I would think you'd have to do both of them, because if it's. Anyway, I just.
No, if that's in there, it would, they, they, they done, or they're connected together, so I would assume you'd have to go in and change that ordinance as well to not connect the percentages.
Right, right. Yeah, cause it's saying here that it shall mean the passage through county resolution of a formula by which evaluates percentage of future renewable energy is attached to it. This is putting down the percentages.
Yeah, we wanna eliminate the percentage.
We wanna eliminate the percentages.
So yeah, that needs, I guess we could send that to Jeff and I, yeah, to me, it sounds like it'd have to modify or change that, uh, ordinance then to make it. So then the resolution we would write to join with that would make more sense, otherwise, yeah, you're not believing the percentage in there anymore, so. Um, yeah, let's have Jeff look at that, I guess. And see his opinion on it. Since he understands the legal jargon more than the rest of us. And then we can.
I just didn't want to have to come in and do it again later.
Right, then it makes sense. Makes total sense, and it, we're not following the ordinance that was put in place, so you gotta follow that law or rule, so.
Right.
Good. Let's do that, we'll send that to Jeff, and then we can, uh, get his opinion and then move forward on it maybe next week. Um, anything else on that? Okay. Uh, one oh five, they're change the deed, um, we're not doing that yet. We're going to have a discussion on the, uh, lots and all that stuff, so. Uh, vacation, road vacations, still working on that. Uh, when we're back, those must sound.
Shit.
Good morning. Uh, last week, Enis and I met with Heartland Power and WCTA. They asked us to come and discuss getting a new master plan completed. The old one was dated in two thousand twelve. And they also wanted to provide us information for a grant that they would, um, pursue to fund this. It's a five thousand matching grant. And Heartland Power and WCTA would provide the, the other match. After we met with them, it was determined that we don't necessarily need a full master plan. Um, master plans usually come before you develop a property, and this property has already been developed and the lots have already been sliced out and everything. So they decided to pursue, uh, a drawings or renderings so that they can market the, um, development and, uh, what could go there. So they've asked me to come up with, uh, a request for proposal and, um, so that they can get some proposals to look at before they go after this grant. Um, I did send a copy of what I've been working on to Jason to look over because looking through the master plan, um, I re- kind of basically rewrote the two thousand twelve master plan, and I just wanted to make sure that I had included all the correct information. So, uh, Mark and John, um, would like me to pursue a request for proposal from McClure. And then I also sent it to Jason. Does anybody else have any other, um, ideas of where you'd like me to send this request for proposal?
Um, I don't think much matters. Those two are fine. We should probably just make sure we get competitive pricing with two bids or two requests anyways, and, uh.
I do have a couple of other places in mind that I'd like to send it to, but I would, I wanna, I wanna talk to Jason a little bit, make sure that, um, all the information is correct before I send it on.
Okay. Yep, that's, if you want to set it to three or four or whatever, that's fine. Um, yeah, cause if they're gonna, if everybody else is gonna pay for it or under any thresholds, so just, at least you're getting numbers from three or four different places or whatever, that'd be okay.
Okay.
That it?
I think so.
Hey, sounds good. Anybody else got questions for Melissa?
I think so.
Good, thank you.
You bet.
Alright, Jason Petersburg, um, let's get the, uh, or the pay estimate review and approve the pay estimate number seven for once construction.
We have the final pay estimate for the top of Iowa second edition, final quantities. Um, you would call there is still a little bit of punchless work remaining to be done, primarily seeding along where we're going south there, they just didn't get it done.
Is that, they'll come back and I saw some little washouts or reels there along, along the ditch bank.
Yeah, they'll clean that area up too, but, uh, we'll, we'll sit on retainage until that works.
Yes.
Uh, final quantities, or final, I guess, contract amount, we were at one million six hundred and ninety-four thousand eight hundred and forty-eight dollars and seventy-six cents. All, all, we're under budget by forty-seven thousand dollars as far as our original contract amount, so it's good. No surprises that caused us to go over, over budget on that project. So these are the final quantities, uh, amount due at this time is two thousand eight hundred and eighty-eight dollars. Um, and then the retainage and the amount eighty-four thousand seven forty-two and forty-four cents. We'll withhold that, have to sit on it for at least thirty days. Um, after then, the likely request to be reduced, but we'll, we'll hold enough to get them back to get that CD part completed, so.
That's a fair amount to keep their attention then, right?
Yeah.
It'll get, it'll get done with that amount, so, okay. Well, usually if you just leave a little.
Yes.
It becomes a back burner.
That off the later.
Yeah.
We, we, we'll typically recommend withholding two hundred percent of the value of work remaining to be completed, but we'll, we'll address that after the thirty days are up here, so.
Okay.
Pay estimate number seven, final pay estimate, net amount due two thousand eight hundred and eighty-eight dollars.
Okay, take motion to approve pay estimate number seven for once construction.
I'm like that motion.
Their second?
I'll second that motion.
Alright, any other discussion? Hearing none, all favor eye?
Alright.
Eye, pose. Alright, Kerry?
There should also be a resolution making final acceptance.
Okay.
This is the resolution, it'll start the clock on the four-year maintenance bond on the project.
Okay. Um. Is there a resolution number for that?
Yeah, it'll just be twenty twenty-one.
Three dash, about eight.
Uh, motion to approve the resolution.
Good, motion to approve the resolution for, uh, the work of once construction, is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
Alright, any other discussion on it? Hearing none, all favor eye?
Eye.
Eye, pose. I'm sorry, we'll call vote, my apologies. Maybe.
Alright.
Lowered.
Eye.
Stone.
Eye.
Now that resolution will be approved.
Those are prettier than mine.
Alright, Jason, how about our updates, um, the project?
Well, I said, also sent out an email. Right, as far as pricing. This is Jackie went through us Saturdays, confirmed the actual cost. So I have in there, I guess, what, what you have into the development. I'm not saying that's what you're selling it for. I'm just saying this is the dollars and cents that we have on record that you have into the, the, and I did an old street lighting, I still am asking them.
Alright, yeah, I looked at that and, um, yeah, everything came in lower, so we've got, what was it, two thirteen?
Two thirteen.
Foot. Um, that's. That's pretty fair number. I've heard some other stuff in the area selling for up to as high as ten, so. Um, which I don't think we need to try to get greedy. I think we need to try to move them, get them on the tax roll to assist our budget. So, um, I went through and just kinda went off a map and made a, just just spitballing from my head on the location of the lot and where they're at, the highest slots at three fifty and the lowest lot at one fifty. Basically got us to about a two fifty-six average. So that's a little more than what we've, if we're able to sell them for that. Any extra money we would take in above and beyond what we have there, we would just pay down more debt. More TIF debt, more loans, or we could take that money and put it into another project to try to get that other water tower connected or something to that effect. Um, but that's kinda my thoughts. Um, I don't know, maybe do we look at getting a an appraiser involved, or should we just take it upon ourselves that just try to get a move?
I guess my biggest concern is I'm not familiar with it enough to know which are the prime lots and which aren't the prime lots. Whether they've got size, square footage, or as you drive in the place or whatever. It would sure be nice to get somebody to give us a little input on that.
Yeah, and I think visibility is a big thing. I was like the, the three right along the ramp, the off ramp, the interstate, you can see them for, you know, a mile each direction. Um, but those is the higher end lots and then the lower, lower priced lots would be the ones that are on Wheelerwood on the backside of that property, basically. And then there's one small square lot there, that's the cheapest one right next to uh, just north of the casino's building. So that's just kinda my thought, but yeah, I mean, if if we want to, I don't know timing, what an appraiser would do, if that's the way we'd rather go.
You know, the issue with the appraiser is, and you'd probably be able to vouch for this too, comparable sales. I, it would just be shooting in the dark for an appraiser, wouldn't it?
Oh, I think they'd be able to. They should be able to get a better idea than us.
I'm not telling us.
Right.
And I don't know who does that kind of appraisal type of real estate commercial like that, somebody in North Ohio here or?
Huh, I I don't know, I'd have to do some checking. I do know a gentleman that does residential, he's done both my houses, but. But I don't know if he's in commercial or not.
Yeah, along the interstate would be more prime.
Right. But I can reach out and see, I can actually just talk with my banker. And see who he would recommend for. Commercial appraiser. If that's any different than if the residential guys do both, or if it's just an appraisers and appraiser, cuz I mean, the way they're supposed to do their homework. On comparable stuff around, so. Yeah, if you guys wanna do that, I'm I'm fine with that, too.
Well, it gives us a little more to stand on when we do take these to public hearing.
Right, at least we got comparison, like say they could compare stuff in the area, compare stuff in the big cities versus small and anything with interstate traffic versus population and so, okay.
That's some banker you could help us with as well.
Actually, I suppose. They praise the whole county, don't they?
Yeah, I mean, I would think they know a commercial market, I mean, that's.
And think of that, I guess, the lady do work for us, so wouldn't be nothing to.
Like a commercial Realtor to do some comparative counts.
Right.
I mean, that's just more more stuff for us when we get to that point, getting these on the market.
Yeah, I guess we can maybe reach out. Have Cindy reach out to Vanguard and just see what they, what they would charge to do that. Yeah, if they do our whole county, they do commercial and residential and ag and everything, so. Yeah, yeah. We'll just speed that process up hopefully, cuz I think with this year. For next year, they're supposed to do the whole county, right? Next year, so. We would get them to start there. So, all right, I'll reach out to Cindy and have her uh, look into that. Uh, Jason, anything else?
I should have used some numbers for those towers inspections.
Okay, yeah, I I had talked to Jason with that, that uh, aerator going out of that water tower freezing up. If there's an issue up there, we gotta get it figured out, and we need to get that blue tower inspected to make sure we're not deteriorating away on the inside, so if we do wanna use that. So I think we'll just try to get them both inspected same time. And so I had Jason get some numbers for that, just estimate numbers, then also just some estimates on connecting that water tower. Um, because with people service helping us work on our water rate study. Um, we were trying to put that into it so that we can use that as capital improvements. Um, they're asking for that. They've got all the other information, we just need something on that, so. So Jason, just throw some numbers at us, try to get water main out there. So. Okay, anything else for Jason? All you have? Okay, thank you, thank you very much. Service still on there? All right, Joel, cameras for the public health.
Yeah, so I think I sent that uh, to you, so there was a discussion and the sheriff might weigh in on this as well, or Mark might. Uh, after the Buffalo Center incident in Minnesota, or Buffalo, excuse me, Buffalo, Minnesota. Uh, were an active shooter event there at the clinic. You know, those entities took a look, I think Jesse and and Mark and the sheriff took a look at their, you know, security situation. And suggested they would have, you know, a camera system that would be joined to our system so that it can be accessed from the sheriff's office as well, so I uh, I had Double E come in who does, they support current camera system. And they also reached out to Jackie about putting some uh, crash bars on a couple of doors. So that we can start locking those. I know there's the southwest door, south, excuse me, southeast door that's open all the time. Uh, it's an employee only door, but I, you know, realistically, that door should be locked at all times. Uh, and then also one of the uh, EOC doors, that northwest door. Uh, we'd like to put a crash bar on that as well, so that door can be locked at all times from from outside ingress. Okay, but that's, that was the quote for that, um, and then the sheriff also requested possibly another one here in the lobby, in the main lobby with court to court, that's where we get most of our traffic from. And we're not happy, or the sheriff's office isn't happy with the coverage we currently have, so I'm still waiting for that, that quote as well.
Okay, so this one was just for?
Public health, so it'd be three cameras, one in the main lobby and two in the EOC to cover all ingress and dress.
Who's paying for it?
That's a great idea. That has yet to be determined.
Is everybody chipping in on that one?
Um, I've I've talked to Jesse and she doesn't have the funds, uh, so it could possibly come out of uh, data processing if needed.
Are there any grants available?
I guess. I I know it was just uh, discussed when the building was first renovated and uh, it was just, wasn't done.
Right.
Correct, but there was some, there was some HIPAA concerns which I think were kind of you know, there's hospitals that have camera systems, there's, you know.
Possibly could come out of the COVID funds since it's, we're doing it because of the COVID vaccine clinics that are going on here, I mean, that's that's really the reason it's being done. I mean, I know that we've, we've gotten money for the COVID thing and then they're going back and and they're doing a one hundred percent reimbursement on those expenses. Now, I think there was a percentage before and it, at some point, they're gonna go back and do a one hundred percent, but.
Do we have to refile for some stuff or something?
Not sure how they're gonna do that. I don't think they're a hundred percent sure how they're gonna do it yet either, it just FEMA was directed to reimburse it one hundred percent versus the whatever percentages they were before, so.
We've been, we've been reimbursed now for all of our expenses we've incurred so far, correct? That we, that we've submitted.
That we were allowed.
Allowed, yeah.
Ninety some thousand, I think it was, and then there should have been a second dispersment to us, uh, just because there was leftover money. I guess I hadn't, I didn't know if that had been in it yet or not, so. Um, and then there is talk about this next bill that does have some direct accounting reimbursements on there, I guess I haven't looked at the whole language yet, well, it hasn't passed us yet, so. Right. They're still hammering it. Yeah, but I know there was some direct county, they weren't gonna go through the state with those funds.
Yeah, it showed on the internet, they're going directly to counties at that.
So I guess a little direction from you guys, I mean, it's um.
Yeah, I I mean, I guess if you need it and um, those vaccines are not gonna stop for quite some time, this is gonna go on throughout the summer, we probably know. So I guess I'm okay with it, and if we need to. If we're able to recoup those funds by, if there's more stuff coming out that we can submit that and get reimbursed for it, let's, let's go after that, so keep an eye out for that stuff.
Is there any ongoing fees that we don't know about now, I mean, you know, going forward after we put the cameras in?
Oh, so there's. There are licensing fees, but it's part of the this current system. Well, okay. There, there's always positive.
Well, I know. And I'm sure.
But I mean, you know, if there's a break in or something like that, we would have no idea what's going on in that facility, so. I I think, you know, we put a good investment in there, there's enough, uh, you know, equipment and resources over there.
Just one of these things is a maintenance upgrade or whatever you're called, just have to have it.
And that's a.
You should have.
Reason number six hundred and eighty-four, why would you be in one building? Spreading out and then just keep pushing stuff out.
You're having to read, duplicate resources all over.
And after this last year and some of the stuff that's going on, we really need cameras on those doors.
Yeah.
Well, it pretends as if something does happen.
We've got them here, they don't have any protection over there, I mean, it's just. Hopefully, public health would be a quiet place, but there are some instances, I so assume, so. Okay. So I don't think we need a motion, if it's a budget.
All I'm, yeah, all this was was just an informational, just to see if you guys were okay with us.
Thank you. Mark, twenty twenty-one, North County Courthouse Security Plan Review and Approval.
Yeah, thanks. You guys all got the copies of the uh, the previous one and then the the current one, there were no changes, the sheriff and I both looked through it and, you know, with where we're at right now, I don't think there's any changes that need to be made on it and stuff, we just need to basically document that it's been reviewed and it looks good at this point in time and we can revisit it in another year from now and we need to do it again.
An annual visit?
Annual or every eighteen months if it gets away from me again.
Okay, no, if you guys are okay with that, I looked through it and didn't see anything.
Good to me.
So, okay, take a motion to uh, approve the courthouse security plan review.
I'll make that motion.
Their second? Any other discussion? There are none in favor, I. Opposed? All right.
Good.
Right, thank you, Mark. Okay, Julie Coates, got some concerns with having to get on the agenda before the to get public comment.
Great.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. So first hand out I have is, um, off the Ritz County website of um, the guidelines for public comments is to be allowed, um, and then it says on here that this was adopted, I think that might be a wrong date cuz it says two thousand eighteen, I think it was actually two thousand nineteen maybe, perhaps?
Might have been both, too.
Okay.
Cause Kenny, Kenny, Kenny actually loved to clarify this.
Okay.
It would be two thousand eighteen cuz I was not.
No.
That was before me.
Okay, so it's not the first time I've brought up this concern. And I do know that according to the Iowa um, open meetings laws and all that, that government bodies are not required to allow public comment um, at open meetings, but many do. And uh, I would remind you of, was in the Globe Gazette when John Skipper had an editorial um, about why he felt the importance of having um, public comment is, and that it's important to our democratic process. Um, it also talks about it there where most Iowa counties do have a public comment time. So it's concerning because to be on this agenda, you need to be on the agenda by noon on Thursday. But the agenda's not out yet. So if you wanna make a comment on something, you don't know what's all on the agenda. Um, and I think according to open meetings, I think the the meeting is supposed to be posted twenty-four hours before the meeting. And I know that the posting is kind of a gray area, I think just putting it up. Of course, your meetings are on a Monday, so it can be posted here, but I guess I would just ask that since we are in the internet age that it be posted online. Um, and the comments at the, previously when they were allowed, they were at the end of the meeting. So theoretically, it could happen that a meeting, a topic could be discussed, a motion made, and it passed in a two-meeting period of time before anyone ever had a public, could have a public comment on it. So I'm not to say that public comments shouldn't be top guidelines, and there's a number of scholarly articles out there that, you know, address this on um, you know, timing, uh, different things, different protocol that could be taken. So in conclusion, I'd say please give this some thought to bring back the public comments and address having the timing of it along with the agenda items in relation to posting of the agenda um, and having that agenda be available online, um, that you guys consider that, okay?
The agendas are all posted online, they should be for our meetings anyways, they have to be for this group. Um, and as far as the public uh, comment portion, I guess that's, that's up to the board, we can think about that. Discuss it. Um, I know a lot of places do three minutes, get three minutes, speak your piece, and that's all, that's all it is, you get to speak your piece. The board takes into consideration and then if it's something that needs to be brought to the agenda that following Monday or meeting or whatever, then it can be. Um, so I guess, yeah, we can.
I had contacted a number of the area counties and about that same time, it was just ironic, again, this was a while back when John Skipper, um, you know, had that in the paper, but a lot of them you have to sign in at the beginning of the meeting, and a lot of them did have it at the beginning of the meeting, which, you know, I guess there's pros and cons to both ways, but uh, but yeah, I'm I'm all for having guidelines and protocol and um, um, again, there's um, guidelines for public comment, local government, you can find it left and right, you know.
Yeah, and with the way Zoom meetings are going, we would definitely have to have a sign in, and if you're zooming in, it would have to be a in the chat, let us know that you're there, what you wanna discuss, because try to, to try to run them and and keep it manageable, that would be the most simple thing, but I don't, we can discuss it and and see what.
And I would just like to say kudos to to having the Zoom meetings and stuff, I mean, I guess that's one thing with COVID that, you know, has come about with more people networking, not being able to attend meetings um, as opposed to years ago, you know, and you know, I appreciate that.
Thank you. All right, and then I wanna discuss the special evaluation, uh, wind energy conversion systems.
That would be me again. Okay, I'm asking board supervisors respectfully to repeal of ordinance ninety-four twelve five. This is allows for special valuation of the wind energy conversion um, systems known as wind turbines. Um, this special valuation is for tax purposes. You know, I I was, as I mentioned, I sit at home and I listen to these board of supervisors meetings and uh, the concerns of. The concerns of funding, which is always gonna be a concern, um, certainly now as of late with road issues, insurance, um. You know, we can go on and on of all the different concerns there are, I think to myself, my goodness, Worth County. We are so blessed to have the casino that has helped out in so many ways, and we have all these turbines spinning around us. I would think we would be sitting very pretty. Um, but it seems, it seems, uh. I I do not feel that we're getting, um, that we could be out of the wind turbines. As far as tax valuation, turbines are currently taxed as building on leased land. Um, per Iowa code four twenty-seven B point two six, um. They can be given by the board of supervisors a special valuation, and I know you guys are all aware that's a special tax break. So back in nineteen ninety-four, the then supervisors did pass an ordinance. Ninety-four twelve five. That does allow this special valuation. So in year one, as you know, but I'll state it again, the wind companies are taxed at zero percent. Again, I say zero percent of net acquisition cost, this despite the fact that they're certainly taking, um. You know, they have facilities here, they have services here, um, whether it be, uh, fire, um, emergency management, uh, security. Um, that those county provides, year two, they pay only five percent of the net acquisition cost, that's all they're valued on. This in subsequent year increases by five percent each year, until at year seven, when the valuation amount. Is maxed at and stays at a valuation of just thirty percent of the net acquisition cost. If you look on that, um, that ordinance ninety-four twelve five in section eight. It says the repeal of this special valuation is allowed. Now, those currently enjoying or taking advantage of this special valuation would continue to do so. Until the end of the nineteenth assessment year, following the year that the property was first assessed. So it's not like it would go away right away for them. Um, I am saying it is time for Worth County to stop giving these multi-billion dollar, most often outstate companies this special tax incentive. And and why do I say that? Well, I would say listen to the wind industry itself, wind seems to be doing just fine. From the American Clean Power Association, which is a subsidiary of the American, uh, Wind Energy Association. Um, twenty twenty, wind industry had the strongest year ever. Uh, the fourth quarter smashed all records, twenty twenty was a banner year for, uh, wind industry despite COVID. Um. As it is mentioned, technological improvements that have allowed renewable energy prices to become more and more competitive. There was an increase of eighty-five percent of wind industry build over the year of twenty nineteen. Um, we can look even as closely at the Facebook page of the worthwhile wind and solar where they have article after article. Including from January twenty-fifth, where, uh, the Wind Technologies Market Report prepared by the Lawrence Berkeley National Lab. Says that energies prices are at an all-time low. Um. It was in two thousand seventeen when, uh, then Mid-American President Bill Furman was, uh. Interviewed on W R radio, and he confirmed that one hundred percent of the turbines, uh, cost of the turbines comes from taxes. And a two thousand eighteen article in the Des Moines Register, uh, Danelle Eller wrote, Mid-American will receive about ten billion in federal production tax credits. For the investment covering the capital costs needed to build the wind turbines. Other counties. Have repealed the 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 special incentive, other counties are considering doing so. Consider what these companies would pay if they were taxed industrial. As your county assessor astutely noted a couple meetings ago, um, if the projects repower. Taking advantage of a nineteen eighty-six, um, section forty-five of the Internal Revenue Code. The companies can then start that special ten-year valuation all over again, and you go back to zero percent. I think that is a concern, so I feel it is in the best interest of Worth County. And I respectfully ask the board of supervisors to repeal Worth County ordinance ninety-four twelve five. Uh, wind industry is no longer a fledgling industry. Um, they receive many other, um. Um, so, uh, tax incentives, um. From various sources, and I think we here in Worth County could utilize, um, that money very well, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Julie.
You have any questions?
Is there any questions?
So the counties that have repealed this, what did they go to then? Cause I don't think they, I I I'm not sure, but we went through this before you guys were both on the board. We, uh, we met down in Franklin County with a bunch of supervisors in North Iowa. That were, actually, I think there were some turbine companies or they were trying to change it and even get it lowered, the amount of revenue that was.
Sure.
Taxed. And we actually had a company come here and tried to do that when I was first on the board, they. They did some kind of funny sale and some pretty much fake corporation, and we're trying to get things changed on the turbine farm that I'm in, cause that is actually twenty-one years old, so that. Nineteen-year thing that's in there with.
I didn't realize that.
But I was just curious, I mean, I don't, and I could be wrong, it'd be probably a legal question, maybe you know too, that, uh. If we would repeal this, it would kind of leave us out in no man's land, cause I I think if it, this strictly follows the state ordinance. From what I remember when I first came on the board, it was discussed, and that's why it was implemented, is because it followed the state. How the state was, said we could do it basically, and it may be untotally off base.
You're right, it says that, but also in that which I handed out there, it says the county can repeal it.
But repealing it, what does it get us? Does it get us more revenue, less revenue, does it?
I can.
Does all the money actually then go to the state instead of the county? Those are the questions you want to ask.
The way I read this, and there's another, the section, there's another section of the code that goes with this. This is, this is a special exemption.
Right.
The thirty percent rules, a special exemption, you were allowed to do that if you want.
Right.
There's two ways you can tax taxi.
Yep.
It's either this way, or it's just general, I mean, it goes to basically a full taxation. Which would mean, which would generate more revenues to the county, as long as they are here. That's the way I understood it, I can't remember what the, the, um. The code is, the other code number is on it, this, this is a stipulation in there that allows that. To do that, and and it's up to the counties, this is, it's a state code thing, but there's, you can do it, you can do it either way.
It is Madison County, I have talked to one of their supervisors, um, she suggested that, and I didn't do it, I. I don't think it's my job to do it, I guess I can do it, that, um, we reach out to them, to their board and ask them, she's. Felt they would share, um, even the verbiage of what they did, but it was, um, and I'm not an expert, and I would say talk to the assessor. Um, but it's my understanding then that you you get the full taxation.
That's kind of, that's kind of the impression I got when I read through that.
Well, I was just curious, because in the state values, and that, that special formula of thirty percent of this, thirty percent of that.
I guess there was talk too about maybe going to fifty percent on that.
There is talk.
Mm-hmm, but I don't know where that is, um, sitting, but I'm saying, I'm saying hundred percent, you know, who gives me a special tax valuation, I mean, I know you get. Um, yeah.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Did the state say anything, you brought up the nineteen eighty-six. Where now that this thing's twenty years old, they're putting in new windmills, they go back to the same. Zero, five, ten, did the state have any, was there any guidelines there? Cause I really don't think. That if you're gonna come back in and put turbines back in again, you should go back to paying no tax at all for the first year, and then move up from five to thirty. You should be, you should be coming in on the same project at thirty percent. At a minimum, I don't go along with that at all.
Yeah.
And you get them, you're getting them replaced now, so, aren't.
They're not replacing them, yeah, they did, they did a little technology upgrade, so.
See, I seen the trains out there and I was going down the interstate about a week or two.
East side.
On the east side, they're working on some.
So none of them be right now?
None are being repowered, I mean, there's been some in Bagel County, I know that weren't very old, I don't know what happened over there. Like they're only five, six years old, and they they doubled those, the ones like the ones I'm in, I don't think they can repower, they don't pick the towers.
But if you repeal this ordinance, you grandfather everything that's out there, yeah.
Uh, so it starts from that first year that it got it, it gives it nineteen years, so as Mark said, that one would be up, um. Martin would be about what, two thousand nine maybe, I think, was when it started?
Third one? Third project?
That would be the third, I believe, yeah.
So, yeah, mine was, mine's twenty-one years old.
Yeah.
But the project like Deer Creek would be still under this same.
They would be.
And they'd have to be that way.
Long as we have, no, I don't think so, I I, I I don't, I don't, that's a good legal, I, you know, like I say, I.
No, the Deer Creek ones, if they, they, if they've signed up for it now.
They have not yet, I don't think.
Okay, so then, then it would be nineteen years if they sign up for it.
Right, they'd be under the TIF. And I guess part of the reason I think they do this is, and it it was always considered. I was told, and I made a little bad juju, that you actually put that right into the budget, and you just got all that money in the county, and then farms are taken out. Now you're, just like, I mean, say the farm I am, they decided not to rebuild that. That money actually is going into the budget, on the farm that I am, that was, it was never tipped, I guess.
Okay.
The one that you're on?
Yeah, that's kind of. That's kind of what I understand, that's one bit wrong directly into the budget, so the schools and all that have been getting the money, everybody that's entitled the money out of that has been getting the money. Say it disappears and they never rebuild that farm. Now the county or the county taxpayers are gonna have to come up with four hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah, you can get yourself in a real. Very careful sticking this.
And you do projects during the lifespan of these turbines or any, any thing like that, and it's too tough, but. You you're getting your, use it, utilize your pay off.
Sydney did, sorry, Mark, Sydney did, we're on chat, said, uh, maybe value it at hundred percent. So. But yeah, no, I agree, i- if if this did go that way, this board would just have to be very cautious on. On not letting the county live to that high society type of income.
So we can't.
So you can't just get, you know, step yourself up to that income level, and then all of a sudden you get a, you get a pay cut, and then all of a sudden you got. A ten million dollar shortfall.
And you're not gonna fill that hole.
We could set it up the same way, I mean, you could set it up the same way and utilize it for things like that, and then percentages wise and stuff, and 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 I. I think the tax too cheap too, I don't disagree.
XL is a forty-seven billion dollar company.
I'm starting to think we ought to put a moratorium on wind construction. Right now, considering I brought up these other two resolutions that contradict each other, now this one's coming up. And then have a committee study this whole thing and figure out what we wanna do going from here forward.
That would, would not be a bad idea, because if we're gonna make changes, obviously this stuff needs more investigation, but. It's gonna be a little time consuming, because when you get into this, and you also get into public hearings and meetings and all that stuff, it's gonna stretch out. A little ways, I don't know how long, but. Um.
And especially if you're gonna repeal this TIF, the ninety-four twelve five deal with the TIF deal. You know, I wouldn't even think the wind companies would go, wait a minute, hold it, if you're gonna take that away.
That's not TIF though, ninety-four twelve five.
That's that thirty.
That's thirty percent.
That's a special valuation.
That's part of the TIF.
That is part of the TIF.
We, if we TIF those. That's why all of them have been tipped, so that they could be used for projects instead of going into the the general budget.
Right.
That's where that.
The reason I'm saying put a moratorium on it, till you do a study, so you can figure out what you're gonna do from here forward, so everybody knows what's going on.
Yeah, I think that's something you wanna check with legalities.
Legalities on that too.
If you're gonna, if you're gonna put a moratorium on one thing, you gotta put it on everything.
Until this can get sorted out.
Yeah, can all get sorted out.
And everything, though, that'd be any construction, anything going on in the county, just thought that to put a moratorium on it, if you're worried about, you know, you shouldn't single out one industry.
Why is that? I mean, I don't understand that, why, why?
Why, why are you picking on one industry and not them all? I mean, you know, because they're, even though this is a valuation thing, possibly, everybody, we, you know, we, we use TIF. We use TIF dollars out of the casino interchange, which we use, you know, and it's all part of the system out there, so I mean, any new construction can be tipped, I mean. No different, we gave the Manly Terminal a break, you know, things like that, I mean.
Right, but you're not giving them that big a break.
It says follow state guidelines.
This is a pretty big break.
Follow state guidelines.
Right, it is.
And I guess I'm just saying as far as the moratorium too, as far as, you know, regulations, I don't know that we're, what type of regulations a county can put on. Various construction things, but, um, as I've mentioned before, there are no regulations. On, uh, construction, citing of decommissioning of industrial wind, so that's why I'm saying. It's different than just any construction, I'm not relating it to just using it for tip. I'm saying it's a, it, the state has said, it's up to you guys to regulate industrial wind. Um, because it's not, not over twenty-five megawatts. Um, through a loophole, so it's up to you guys, the others, I don't know how you're going to regulate. You know, building, certain buildings, um, I mean, there's state. Things a lot of times on construction, but there is not on industrial wind. I think it's different.
Cool.
Okay, thank you again.
Thank you, um. Yeah, this needs to get sorted out, and I'm a hundred percent against with that. It's gotta get sorted. First things first, is the, the most recent resolution, we're gonna change that, that needs to get sorted out. And then if we wanna discuss the other, or the other ordinance that would need to get sorted out as well, and probably sooner than later, so. Um, I'm up for however you guys wanna handle it. To, uh, to me, they, it needs to get sorted. It needs to now, cause it's, I don't wanna, I don't, I'm not here to, to stop any. Economic development. Progress like that within this county, I wanna see it, you know. See things grow too, and I hate to cut out anybody, but there's gotta be some fairness to the people, to the county, as well as, you know. Because that in turn. Is to the entire county, when it, when there's, when there's fairness coming back here with valuations with, to the tax dollars. It affects our entire county as a whole, it's every single person, you know, and I don't, not out to pick on, on farmers telling you what you can or can't do with your land. I don't, I don't agree with that, but being able to have some fairness and everything and do the best for the county as a whole. To me is, is a great idea, and I've said that since day one, so. Um.
You can't really do, and you do, you can have a wind ordinance without zoning, you do not have to have zoning to have a wind ordinance. And you can, uh, write an ordinance so that it's not exclusionary, so that it can allow. Um, you can write it in many different ways, so, but one thing, as, um, supervisor Lober brought up. I would advocate for a moratorium as well, because as soon as the wind industry developers learn of this. They will, um, they will take measures to advance and before anything, so that they. That they can get their project done, so I would ask that it be done, um, expediently.
This project wouldn't be coming here if the landlords weren't accepting it. And I'm not, I'm not disagreeing with them, and if we could tax them more, we probably should be, but, uh, you know, as far as moving forward, I mean, it's.
I think we'd have a better discussion of taxing them more versus taxing our ag land more, you know.
Well, that's definitely, that's probably more, really more a state issue.
Could be, you know.
Possibly, I'm not sure.
But.
That's, there's a role that I found that.
Right.
And ag land's probably fairly well taxed for what it actually, what actually the services are rendered from it too. You know, where, where, most of our services, the people are in it. People should be paying for them, not ag land.
Right. Um, well, I guess let's, obviously, it's not an agenda item, let's take it into consideration. Let's let Jeff look at. Uh, the first resolutions, or look, let him look at all of it and just give us the guidance on what we are capable or not capable of doing. Um, in the meantime, we can reach out to some other counties that have, have done some of this stuff and just see. How well it's going or what what the situation is.
Really curious, you know her name, I I know who you're talking to, Madison County.
Um, I have it in home.
Okay, I I know exactly who you are, cause I've talked with her at some meetings, state meetings, I've seen. So.
So if I can help with that, um, let me know.
Yeah, I'm just curious, really, reach out to the county and see if they've repealed this, are they getting the extra tax money, or are they still taxing off the thirty percent? You know, thirty-three percent. You know, thirty-three percent where.
And you know, it was a dare that did put a moratorium in, or they had a moratorium.
Madison did too.
Yes, yes, and others, you know, a lot of times they'll work on, they'll put a moratorium in while they're working on things. You know, and then, and then the moratorium comes off, and then it is what it is, whether it's a cap. Or whether it's, okay, yep, but these are our guideline, these are, this is our setback, this is our decommissioning, whatever, so.
I guess, let's do our homework a little bit on this, if you wanna, you know, talk with Jeff on those. And then I can start talking with, with other counties too, I have talked with Cessut a little bit, I know they have a cap on the amount of megawatts. Uh, that they had put in place a few years back, Cessut does. They are at it.
They're at it.
They're like.
The last one.
Yeah, I talked to Donnie a couple weeks ago, and he said they are right at uh, see, they're five or six hundred megawatts. That was their cap for the county, and I asked him how that was going, and he said there hadn't been a ton of complaints, I mean. But they, yeah, they are just, he said we could probably take two to three more towers, but all, would would take them to their cap. Yeah, they just, that was part of the Winnebago, that west, west side of, west side of Winnebago, and then Cessut's got some, but that was their cap.
And of course, Winnebago is very much tied in with the one going on up there in the northwest part of our county. And, but there's a big pushback on that, and um the D N R um. Study was just publicly released, and it does not bode well for placing those at all.
All right, let's do our homework then, and uh we'll discuss this again a little bit next week, if we got some of those.
Let me know if I can get you any information.
Okay, thanks, Julie. Well, our department had discussions, kind of gonna be our. Our uh.
Oh.
Bunch of stuff I would say. Um, board appointments, I gotta know on the Board of Adjustment, I tried twisting his arm, but he wouldn't let me. So I'm waiting here, I have another, I'm gonna make another call, so on that zoning board of adjustment, so. Oh, yeah. So Supervisor Weekly, we'll run through that quick, Venus, you doing anything exciting this week?
I just went to the same meeting that Melissa did, and the only thing I can add to that is Mark Tomac brought up the fact of having a. A uh telehealth out there, he thought that would be good with a small pharmacy next to it. Because there's a lot of truckers and people moving up and down the road, and we thought that would be good. He did mention that in some of these retail uh commercial places, that. He'd like to see apartment houses above it, but then Melissa did some digging, and it says right in. So that there's no residences out there, so we, that kind of got squashed, but.
That's right.
Other than that, I sat in on the ethics, the H R and all that stuff on Tuesday, and as I said, in meetings all afternoon on those, they were, they're good meetings.
Oh, the ISAC stuff?
ISAC stuff, yeah.
Yeah, spring with schools.
They had, they had budgeting on there and that kind of stuff, so.
That's really good stuff to go through, I know it helped me out a bunch, so. That was it, that was it, yeah.
I, basically, same thing you did, of course, we did a special budget workshop we did.
Oh, we did that too, yeah.
I said in our ISAC stuff, but I was hoping to hear more like on the budget and stuff, but it was just basic how it works, and you know. Real good suggestions in our weekend.
Yeah, I need to watch the second one.
Yeah, I'm probably, I didn't get them all done yet, and then I uh, we have a, every two, every two weeks now, and yeah, and they, for a while, they weren't having. I missed a few too, the Iowa Workforce Development, the W I O A, or whatever that abbreviation is, yeah, it's kind of training. Uh for the Iowa Workforce Development Board, kind of tells us what we have to have done, you know, and. It was not very, I think there was only a half a dozen from the whole state.
Sure.
This week, I think, but I think they're just kind of started firing them back up for a while, they had, didn't have them, because. Pretty much every, every region in the state has met their first-year needs as far as getting all their. Right, ducks in line, all their boards hired, and all their A's and fiscal agents and all this, we have to have done. We can, we got that done thankfully, so, good, but I continue to hop on those a little more often, hopefully, you have to kind of keep up with that. Good, see where we're at.
I had a rip canal last week. It was just a repair.
I didn't realize it was part of our job.
It was on Friday, I didn't have any last week, so. Had a quiet one for once. All right, well, let's take like a five-minute break, and then we'll uh.
Let's adjourn.
Oh, we're just gonna do workshop? Motion there, second there, all right, all favor I, I, post, meeting is adjourned, thank you.